Calling to order, this is the meeting of the RMLD Board of Commissioners. It's being videotaped at RMLD's office at 2:30 Ash Street, Reading, Massachusetts. This meeting will be videotaped for distribution to the community television stations in North Reading, Wilmington, and Lindfield. And just a reading of the RMLD Board of Commissioners Code of Conduct. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of official agenda as well as items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name, their address prior to speaking. It's the role of the Chair to remain -- Chair to maintain order in all public comment and ensuing discussion. So, with our Chairman, our official Chairman not here right now, but we think he's in pursuit, we're gonna start with first opening remarks. I think the opening remarks are, we had our operating budget, which we discussed last night, and we're gonna move, the main part of today's meeting is to move to the capital budget, and we have some other items to talk about as well. Now, I think at this point, we're gonna welcome our Chair back.
Did you take over, man?
I was enjoying it. I was really enjoying it, Phil. But you can pass the gavel back to our Chairman.
Did you at least bang it hard?
He did.
He didn't do a [inaudible].
I wanted to show respect to you, so I...
My ears are still ringing from last night.
Two hours in traffic to get here tonight. Ah, ridiculous.
It was worth it, though.
I know it's worth it, but still, it's frustrating. All right, where are we?
We're just up here to welcoming our C A B.
Okay, very good. Welcome our C A B member. Okay, you want to say anything, or?
[laughing]
In words of wisdom?
It's okay.
Okay. If not, then I don't see any liaisons, and we have nobody here for public comment. So let's move on to the capital budget, so, okay?
Okay. Ameed Jafari, our Director of Engineering and Operations, and myself are gonna present the capital budget, the second part of the full budget from last night, as Dave indicated, the operating budget, and then we'll take a vote or ask for a vote at the end of this presentation for the full budget.
Yeah, very good. Ameed, you wanna come up?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna stay over here if I may.
Can, is they okay with the...
Yes, they can see us.
Okay, I'm sure we're okay with the...
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the capital budget for fiscal year 2018. This year, we did it deliberately. I figured that you know, we'd like to know the projects that, you know, how we do with the status of projects that you are trying enough to give us authorization to spend that kind of money to system improvements. So, we're gonna have a slide on that, and then we're gonna move it on to the recurring projects, and then I'm gonna tell you what the new projects are, based on the new study that we did with Boof and Associates, as well as the ones that, you know, are reported today.
I want some water.
It's a big criticism. So, the first one, this is the review of the FY17 projects scheduled either to be completed or these projects are either completed, some of them, or they're to be completed by June 30th, 2017. The first one, that's my favorite, is to be the generation that we budgeted for 2.7 million, and I guess we're gonna be living under the, you know, under the budget for that due to the competitive bidding. So, that project is moving along. I mean, the generator is gonna be delivered on June 1st, and we're gonna start up the, fire up the generator on July 1st. July 1st, I guess, is on holiday, right? It's Saturday or so, so the week after July 1st.
Yep.
The first week of July. So that's gonna be running and helping us to get the credit on the capacity and transmission, and that's a reason we need it. The H VAC upgrade project, this is completed. The various upgrades at Station 4, by the way, the ones that you see in green, these are the ones that the Boof and Associates recommended for that 20-year planning study that we made. So that's why we figured out that it's better to show them different colors, so you see what was recommended and what was done and what's being done, being proposed. So, various projects at Station 4, we needed the 35 kV potential transformers. The battery bank is replaced now, the relays are all upgraded, the relay and scaling integration for bus A and A, they're all done. The only thing that left to do is for them, you know, and get away replacement, this is a cable replacement in order to increase the ampercy of the feeders, and that's being done right now. Right now, the contractors are working on that, they're trying to cool 2,800 feet of the cable and replace the aluminum with the copper to get more ampercy out of that. Station 5, the L T C control replacement, we had a problem at that substation with the transformer L T C, that's all fixed. Substation grounding equipment upgrade, it's all done. This Station RTU, that's the communication device between Station 3 and the local, or the control room, or skater at the control room, and that's being, that's installed now, the wiring gear, they're going through positive wiring and program. The analog devices, cap and upgrade, this is already done, we did that a few months ago. The control center modifications, this is in progress. So we just got code for the control center, control room upgrade and expansion, and the project's gonna start in June, the first week in June. And miscellaneous projects like fault indicators and voltage drop, the data recovers that were like $1,000, and that one, we already purchased that, and we've already done that. So this is the list of the projects that were completed or to be completed in FY17. The projects continuing from FY17 that you voted for, and we said that, you know, where we need to also continue doing go on to FY18. Basically, LED streetlights, I'm glad to announce that approximately two-thirds of the streetlights are on schedule. They're all installed and upgraded, so the towns, they're gonna start seeing the benefits and, you know, the savings. Each year, we committed to 2,450 lights to be replaced, and this is the second year, so by FY18, July 1st, we're gonna be done with the project. So everything is going to be LED. The G I S, this one is going really well. We have basically gave these resources, they have completed the data collection, and now we're going for checking and reviewing the work and the data that they submitted, that we are doing the integrity check, which they're supposed to deliver the data to us with less than 2% inaccuracy, or 98%, over 98% accuracy, which is, so far, it's going well, and our crews, they're doing that. The data, this project's gonna be done, basically completed done by September, or October 2017.
Nice.
We still gotta have to do some work in 2018 for that G I S upgrade and data integration, the integration part of that to other systems scheduled for FY18. The grid modernization, base one, we're still gonna be installing more, we did a pilot program last year, we installed four switches, and now this year, we're gonna be installing another set of four switches to program. We already started seeing the benefit of installing these and grid modernization, which all utilities, basically across the state, they're going for in order to increase the reliability, improve the reliability. And actually, we saw the benefit of that during the last storm, that the feeder was picked up less than 10 seconds, and that was really good. It was a good move on that part. The new Wilmington substation, we are, we've been continuously searching for land, we've looked at three locations, and one is kind of promising. So Colleen and I, we've been doing negotiations, and today, we checked with the town of Wilmington for one of the sites, and it looks like it's feasible. So we have two options, either purchasing the land, or we can rent it or lease it for 99 years, which both options are available. And we checked with the, with the planning and zoning, it looks like the zoning would allow us to purchase that, because we are the non-for-profit company, and for the benefit of the ratepayers. However, there are some other issues with the land that we might have to go with the lease, so we got both options at our disposal. But that one is, you know, we've been going back and forth for almost a year, a year and a half.
But, can we make a...
Go ahead.
Yeah, it would be a frontage issue. So if you buy it, then if the company that owns the land has a certain amount of frontage, and then you take some of their frontage, that's a frontage problem. But if you lease it, they get to keep their frontage, so it would be a variance or whatever. So that would be why it would be different.
We're still gonna have to, because it's close to the wetland, we're still gonna have to go to get the permit and go through the Conservation Commission, and we checked with them today, it looks like we're gonna be alright.
If we lease the land, can that be part of the capital? Or is that a separate? Is that a question? Would it become, would it become capital? Could we basically capitalize the lease and increase our, increase the investment in the plan?
The actual assets would be increased, is, if the money spent in the leasing, I'll have to ask Wendy how that gets booked.
Okay. It's a question, it's an open, a question to be asked?
Yeah. Good question.
Because if you purchased it, it would definitely...
Definitely be [inaudible]. Right, right.
But a 99-year lease is almost like buying.
Well, that's, but I don't know what the accounting would be, what the accounting would be like for that.
That's a good question.
That's the question.
Very good question.
It's just that in 300, 300, in that fur coating, there's land assets. So when you're leasing, it's not a land asset.
Right.
I don't know how it's booked, but we can get that answer from Wendy later on.
Right.
But if you purchase it, then it goes on that as an asset.
Right. Yes.
Good. The next line item is panphone switchgear upgrade. These are the 15 kV panphone switchgears, and we got about 25 of them, it's a six-years program to replace so many a year. The first one is targeted to be upgraded, it's the river park in Wilmington, and that's the first one. This one is the only, believe it or not, the only project that, it's gonna, due to the late arrival of the switchgears, they were supposed to be delivered by mid-March, now we just got the news from the factory that it's not gonna be delivered until June, late June, so we might not make it. The rest of them, basically, all the projects, that 95% of the projects that we said we're gonna do last year, they are either gonna be completed or on the way to be completed. Yes?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Two questions. The, the gas generator will be ready July 1. Wasn't it supposed to be ready June 1?
June 1, June 1st, the engine is gonna be delivered.
But didn't, wasn't the, wasn't the target last year to have it up and running on June 1?
The target for that was to have it by end of fiscal year, I guess. That's what we had, that's what we said we're gonna do.
As long as we get the peak after July 1?
As long as we have the peak after July 1, we should be fine.
So can we arrange to have the hot weather wait until July?
Unless you hit 104 degrees in June, mid-June. Unfortunately, that one, again, it was the matter of the contract issue that we had with Milton Cat.
Right.
Performance bond, and you know, all the liabilities are here and there, so it took a little bit longer than, you know, we expected.
And on the, on the grid, I just, I was just wondering, because I remembered it was supposed to be done earlier, is the, are transformer sensors, those are a thing, right, that you can do, but we don't have those, right? Transformer, failure sensors for transformers? Sensors that help you detect, like, give you a sense that they're about to fail before they do?
For the transformers or for the, for the generators?
For the, I'm switching to transformers now.
Okay.
I'm asking...
The transformers, they don't have any sensors for failures? The only thing is that, you know, if the...
A fault detector or a feeder?
Something that, that gives you a sense that something's changed, and there's a voltage change, that gives you an indicator that it's starting...
Predictive, something like that.
Yeah.
Predictive maintenance, we got the routine cyclic program for the substation. We annually check the oil, the D E A analysis, that's a dissolved gas analysis.
Right.
And that gotta tell us whether something has changed or not.
Are you talking about a piece of equipment that...
That would help you, that would help you, I'm, my understanding is that it exists, that it can, there's indicators of imminent or decline of transformer performance that gives you a sense that it might fail soon, and that you can send a truck out sooner than waiting for it to fail.
There are, I know which one you're talking about, these are the ones that, you know, you can purchase and put it mounted on your transformers, these are the, like, fault indicators.
Right.
And, but, these are very expensive, and I'm not hearing too many good, you know...
They don't work?
You know, I don't know if you get more benefit from it, from the program that we have.
I'm only asking...
What we have, it's standard, pretty much.
We're building a transformer load management, which you tie in all of your billing, so you know what each transformer is loaded properly.
Right.
And if it's loaded properly.
Right.
Not overloaded or underloaded.
You're gonna...
It has a certain life cycle curve, and it's protected with a fuse.
Right, right.
So, I mean, they're, they're pretty passive when you install them, unless it's a manufactured defect, but we test them when we get here. So, but we, the switches are fault indicators and stuff we're putting in that would isolate and bring, you know, close back in a circuit, so we can just isolate an outage.
I know we're doing more than used to be done. I know that for sure. I'm asking, because one of...
You're talking about the substation transformers or distribution transformers?
The ones, the distribution transformers.
I was talking about the substation transformer, I thought that's, we were talking about generators.
The reason I'm asking is, is one blew up, and, you know, there was, I mean, it's good that nobody was out there, but...
Not here.
Oh, no, that wasn't a transformer, that was a lightning arrester.
It was a lightning, 171 Washington Street.
The lightning arrester is supposed to prevent any damage, it's an arc shoot.
Okay.
And what happened for this particular one is some of the polymer on it, you know, melted.
Okay.
That doesn't happen all the time, it was kind of a, have you ever had one, Jason, happen?
One of ours failed.
No, but I mean, the polymer coming off of the...
Like it just kind of melted?
Yeah.
And a couple of those were usually just like an animal contact.
Yeah.
At the top of the arrester, it wasn't, came away protected. We had one not too long ago, they squirreled right from the, right from the arrester to the switch, and we had to cut the arrester clear up there, it was all melted again.
So I mean, it can occur, and the fact that this one went and it dropped some polymer on someone's car.
Okay, I'm only asking if there's, if there's...
Yeah, but that's, it is not a transformer, it's a lightning arrester.
It is for the distribution transformers, they're I F Ds, internal fault detectors.
Yep.
Which basically works based on the gas, as, you know, the transformer heats up, if the gas...
Are you talking about the lightning arrester issue on 171 Washington Street?
That's kind of what prompted my question, whether there's more sensing we can do to detect things before they fail. Good, carry on.
Answering questions?
Yes.
Great. So, panphone switchgear, you know, that's, that's gonna arrive late June, so I don't think we're gonna make it this year, so it's gonna have to go to the next year for the river park. The Station 3 relay upgrade, the state, scaling integration, this one is being done right now, and we're making good progress. There was a problem at this substation, when this substation was designed, unfortunately, they had, they had some design flaws. The transformers were not designed right, they were not the right type transformers, because the fault current, the short-circuit duty is too high, and in some of the substation, I mean, the transformers, they were not high enough to load the fault current for incident energy to make it safe for the people when they're doing the switching in front of the gear, switchgear. So, we fixing that, we have proposal in order to fix that, but the relays are also needed to be upgraded, so we can bring more data from the substation back to the skating. So that's what this project's all about, we're making good progress on that. Miscellaneous stuff like LED lighting of the 230 Ash Street, we're working, and that's electric, legal supply, equipment. These are the charging stations that we said we committed to towns, we're gonna do one for each town, that's $10,000 per year that we said we're gonna install, that's what this money is for, basically, combination of those. The new projects that we're proposing for FY18, it's Station 3 reactors.
I'm sorry, if I could ask just one question on that. So how much does a charging station typically cost? Is it, what kind of range does electric car charge?
Depends on the construction. And technically, like, for the parking lot, right, outside over here?
Right.
If, with the grant money, there are some grants out there that we are applying for. If you're not disturbing the, you know, the parking lot, and if it's gonna go on one of the parking spots, that should be, with the grant money, you should be doing it with 10 grand.
10 grand, and without the grant money, it's...
Without the grant, probably talking about 20.
20, okay, good, thank you.
20,000. But if you start, you have to increase the foundation here and there, it could go up to $50,000, depending on the site and the manipulations that you're gonna have to do, modifications to the pad or to the parking in order to accommodate that. So that's basically what we're talking about. So, the station, I'm sorry, you have any question?
Only, I mean, are you anticipating just letting any member of the public just park and get free electricity, or what's the model there?
We're redoing the parking lot for a different flow.
Yep.
And we're hoping to put in a fast and slow charger, because different models have different abilities. And you can come in, you swipe your card, and you can...
You pay.
You have to pay.
You pay, yeah, yeah. Is this ChargePoint, or are you paying us?
They, you can't buy, you can't buy electricity anywhere in our service territory unless you pay us.
Right. Okay.
Unless it's privately owned, and that owner is paying the bill.
It's all good, please.
No, no, no.
[laughing] I like this.
It's like a credit card.
That's one way, yeah.
John.
Go ahead. Colleen, are you saying nobody could resell our electricity in our town? Is that what you're saying?
Right, this is a franchise, there's no...
Okay.
But there are some, like, companies that will put in a vehicle charging station, and it's metered to them, they're paying for it.
But could they charge customers for that?
No.
They can't resell our electricity?
No.
Okay.
I think Analog, Analog has one up there.
Analog has one, yes.
Yes.
So this is the project, Station 3 reactor, as a part of the design flaw for that substation, in order to lower the incident energy and arc energy. So we are installing, to compensate for the transformer impedance, we are installing these reactors, there are six reactors, one set for each transformer, in order to drop the incident energy and make it safer for, for the safety aspect of that. So that's gonna cost 561,000, and we just had a bid, and actually, you have a bid that you're gonna be approving tonight, because we decided there's a long lead, this is a long lead item. So we just wanted to start the bidding process sooner, and we're gonna be voting on it tonight, so we can start purchasing it, hopefully after July 1st. 35 kV underground cable upgrade, and these are the two lines that they're feeding Station 5 from Station 4, and you need to upgrade those, the underground cable, it's almost 30 years old, so we're gonna have to upgrade those, and one of those is gonna be done this year, and then it's a three-year project, we're gonna do, you know, the other three, one was replaced, failed this year, so we had to do it. And then we're gonna replace one in the following year, and then the following after that, we're gonna replace the other two.
Excuse me, when the, if I may, when the underground cable fails, is it a catastrophic failure, or is sort of a gradual dying?
Well, when, they, they either fail, or they don't, they're good, usually, that's what happens. These cables mostly, they're in water, and small pinhole degradation of the, you know, the insulation could cause the failure, and usually, that's what happens. These are all, they should be replaced a long time ago, like 15 years ago, 10, 15 years ago, and they've been replaced, and we're lucky that we got a life out of them as they are. But we got a redundancy at the substation, so if one line fails, automatically, the load of that transformer that is shut off or the power is out, it's gonna be transferred to the other transformer. And so, you, probably, the residents would see only 10 seconds, 10, 15 seconds outage for a bus transfer, but that line still, you know, is gonna be out until we upgrade the cable and fix the cable.
Good, thank you.
Any more questions? All right. So pole mine upgrade in Woburn Street, the design for this project is underway, and I'm hoping that, you know, we can get it started in fall and get it done and over with with, because these are like the pole lines that gain lots of N E C violations, and the pole line is integral shape, like the one that, you know, you saw in Nolan Street, we did that last year. So this is another critical area, we've got three segments on them, and we need to fix them, so we are getting that fixed.
Which town is that?
That's in Wilmington.
Wilmington.
Yes. The 115 kV transmission line upgrade, this is another one that, you know, these lines that are over 30, 40 years old, and the poles, we tested those poles, some of them, they failed. Two of them, I had to do them as an emergency measure this year, which we actually didn't forecast that, we didn't expect it to, to be failing so soon. So what happened is that we upgraded two, we're still gonna upgrade six more lines, these are the ones that they're tapped off of every source line that feeding the substation. So that one is gonna be done, and it's a two-year project, we got two lines, one set of poles we're gonna upgrade in FY18, the other set we're gonna do in FY19, and that's a two-year project. The pole replacement program, that's recurring, because this, as you know, we test 10% of the poles in our jurisdiction area, which means that North Reading and half of Reading, we've got 6,400 poles, every year, we test 10%, and 640 poles being tested every year, and depending on the results, the ones that they fail, we immediately replace them, that's why you see those double poles, and some of them, they're still out there, that we try to get to them as soon as we can. And some of them, they kind of marginally passed, and we are planning upgrading those as, as we go. Every year, we do more and more of those. So, please, I'm asking our residents to be patient with us, I know if they're ugly, I don't wanna see those in front of my house, but we do our due diligence, we're doing the best effort we can. We are very quick, we respond very quick for the transfers, but we don't have any unfortunate control over the Comcast and Verizon for those transfers, and, you know, we do the best we can trying to expedite the process. That's why we have that engine program, that, you know, the ball in the court, everybody knows that, you know, when it's due, and when they're gonna be doing. So the secondary and main replacement, this was another surprise that we encountered last year, that we saw neutral failures, again, due to the aging equipment, the neutral of the services, they started fading, and we saw some, you know, troubling issues. So we started this program this year, and we figured for the next 10, 15 years, we're gonna replace so many, and we need the help of the contractors in order to do that. So Colleen and I, we sent a bid out, actually, that's the one that, you know, you voted, I guess, the last fourth meeting, or the one before, maybe in April, April or March, you was voting to hire the contractors in order to do that. This is a very good program in order to upgrade. By the way, this is also continuous, we don't wait for the contractors to do that, the contractor, they're gonna, our contractor is gonna augment our staff. This is an ongoing program. We have dedicated crews that they're going around, and they try to fix those, we have, we have the list of the oldest neighborhoods to the newest neighborhoods, and anything over 15 years or 20 years, they're all gonna be upgraded and, you know, addressed. So we're gonna have this program. Miscellaneous, like the power washer, the remote skater room, partial roof, the lobby installation chairs, battery storage here and there, that's, you know, it's a one-year project, and it's gonna cost, we're asking for $230,000 in order to do those. So these are the, all the new projects. Annually budgeted and recurring projects, these are the ones that every year, no matter what, this is gonna happen for the next 10, 15, 20 years. But miscellaneous computer hardware software, 152,000 for FY17, we committed, we're asking 340 for FY18. They're rolling start replacing these other trucks and vehicles, so 230,000. Security upgrades, the A M I mesh network expansion, these are the Eaton mesh network for the new meters that we started creating, because we had, you know, the club 500, that Itron didn't have any solution for it. This system is a two-way mesh network, a very smart system. We can also use it for our distribution automation, as well as the metering, the remote metering data backend, and integrating the cards there and customer details. The communication equipment, smart grid fiber nodes expansion, we, this is, this is a good asset for RMLD, that we bringing the substation information, as well as we using the smart grid devices to bring, communicate with them, and bring those information back to the office, so that's being utilized, we're gonna create more nodes. David, that's a good idea. So more news, so put those to install more fiber nodes and utilize them. 13 8 kV upgrade, the step-down areas, we got many of those going in two or four towns, these are the ones that we stepped down from 13,800 to 4160. The 4160 volt is the old network, so we're trying to upgrade those, and as we're making those upgrades and reliability enhancements, improvements to what they... So we're trying to upgrade those, and as we're making those upgrades and reliability enhancements improvements to what the neighborhoods, these are all going to be gone. So that's part of the project, and we're asking three hundred five thousand, I'm sorry, seventy-one thousand for next year. Each year, we do a little bit. Underground facilities, this one is a big area, big concern to me. Because last year, and you're going to see that, you know, which neighborhoods. Last year, we had few areas that we did not expect such a failure, such a catastrophic failure. Again, due to the aging of the equipment. That was a locator drive in Wilmington. We just wanted to upgrade one transformer, replace one transformer, we ended up doing entire, you know, neighborhood. Or ten or fifteen transformers that we had to do. Because one after one, they were all same vintage, and it would have costed more if we've got to come back and do it more for utilization and, you know, immobilization and demobilization. So we started upgrading those that was not planned, but we had to do that as a part of the project. The routine constructions, these are the ones that the list of them that you, you have for pole upgrades, for transformer load management programs and things like that, that, you know, every year, we spend about one million. Last year, I forecasted one million. Unfortunately, we had to go one point six million because of the unforecasted failures and, you know, and protect failures that we had in multiple neighborhoods, like McDonald's Ave, locator drive, and a few other Gandalf State, these are the whole, that's, you know, old neighborhoods that needed attention. That's why we created this project in order to catch up with those and hopefully, you know, we don't see those failures. The new customer service, services, that's a hundred forty thousand, we asked FY sixteen, FY seventeen, FY eighteen, a hundred fifty-six thousand. And the miscellaneous purchases, the meters, metering equipment, transformers, and substation equipment. That we're going up a little bit again, that's because of this transformer load management and upgrades that we are doing. We are going through those like nothing, you know, it's, every year, we replaced at least, I think we had between a hundred fifty to two hundred transformers. So, and these are the aging transformers that we, to avoid the oil leak or non-necessary, you know, trying to catch up by them.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Any questions?
Question, I mean, could you talk a little bit about what, what's inside the new customer services? Is that office layouts or is it...
These are the, the new customer services, I think that's part, that's for Jane, right? This is something about...
No, it's new customers.
The new customers?
New customers.
You're hooking up new customers, new commercial, new services.
Oh, 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 I thought it was a...
New users, new users.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
I thought that also that's for the IRD PDR program. It's not for that. It should really include that. Great. So in summary, in FY seventeen, we budgeted nine million four hundred six thousand. We're estimating to spend nine million six hundred ninety-five, so we're going to be a little bit over. That the spillover is because of those unpredicted failures that we have, and we have to fix those neighborhoods. We're planning for FY eighteen, estimated spending five million six hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. So that's what we're asking, yes, sir.
Yep.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, just a couple of questions. I don't remember from last budget. So is there a formula that the RMLD uses to come up with, you know, a range of, you know, because obviously, we can't spend, you know, a hundred percent. But some, some companies tie it to, you know, depreciation or something. Is there some formula that we use to...
Go ahead.
If you go to page sixteen on your tablets.
Seagulls capitalization.
That's your six-year, you know, plan. Everybody have page sixteen? So that's your six-year plan capital that you saw last year. See, I'm just trying to compensate for you. Like, you know, this is the full layout, and you've got the little tickler information on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
If you keep going through that, at the end of that, so page nineteen, I put together this little chart that goes at the bottom of your capital. You see it?
Yep.
It's a depreciation.
Looks like this?
Yep.
Okay. And that runs up with all the columns above, right?
Yeah.
So if you look at FY seventeen, it says, you know, we're starting off plant and service one hundred and thirty-seven, nine seventy-six, right?
Yep.
And that's in thousands. And then your additions. So see the nine-six, nine-five, if you look up to the column above from the capital, nine-six, nine-five?
Yep.
And then your adjustments for retirements, and you go all the way down. Cumulated reserve, net plant and service, maximum allowed return, eight percent.
Yeah.
Then it goes down to your depreciation fund, your beginning balance, interest earned. Okay, so we have all of this maintenance and all these projects to do. And some people will say, oh, well, let's increase the depreciation rate, let's let the DPU know we're going to go to four percent. Well, our strategy is to keep it at three percent and then be, instead of putting typical million or one point five million from the operating fund at the end, we transferred two point five million dollars in on FY eighteen. See, if you go to operating fund transfer, a million, one point five, then two point five, then back to one point five. And we use that money at the end to prevent us from having to go to bond. Or prevent us from increasing depreciation expense from three percent to four percent.
So that's, to my question, that's kind of the formula you use, you tie it to depreciation?
Right. And so what you see here at the end, see the ending balance, five hundred ninety-three, I'm sorry, seven hundred sixty-seven thousand. To me, that's a little bit low.
Yes.
But we're doing an awful lot of work. And then next year, you're ending at six hundred. Then you go back up to almost a million, then you go back up to two million, and then FY twenty-one, you're at four million. Now you're, now you're back up where we're probably almost done with the bulk of this lack of maintenance. And now you're only going to spend what you're putting in. You put in four million, four and a half million, you spend four and a half million. And then we even out. But this has been quite a ride for the last three to five years to completely rebuild a system. I mean, is it, I, I don't know if you can tell from what I'm saying, the amount of equipment and material and long, short-term planning is hu, it's a huge amount of work.
No, I, I was actually looking at it from a different perspective. So given all that, I guess I would have thought we would be spending at least the same in FY eighteen, given, because it sounds like there's still lots to be done. So, I mean, we, I guess I'm asking really, is, are we funding the CapEx budget sufficiently, given that we have all these? I mean, you mentioned just the example of thirteen, you're going in to do one transformer, you have to do thirteen. You don't need too many of those surprises to...
Well, it's not going to come down. The only reason why FY nineteen goes, see, we were at, we were at ten, then we came down to nine. Now we're coming in at seven point six. Now we're back up to eleven, but that's the one year that we're going to be bonding for the substation. So five point seven million, you see down the bottom of that, comes off of that. And you go down to six, and you go down to four point five, and now we're, we're almost even with what we're actually putting in for depreciation expense, which is what we discussed yesterday.
Yep. And what drives the FY twenty-one and twenty-two again?
What drives it? It's all the sheets above it in those columns.
So it's less, it's just less, the balance is much bigger because you've gone through a lot of your heavy plan projects.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And every year, we evaluate. I'm hoping that I don't have to continue spending. And then if it stabilizes, hopefully, you're not going to have the catastrophic failures that experienced last year.
Right.
Surprisingly, have last year. So if everything goes well, we should be returning.
My last question was just around you, which is a good idea, highlighted the CapEx expenses tied to the study.
Yes.
Is there anything that the study recommended that for some reason, we didn't get to or couldn't do or...
As a matter of fact, we're going to see, we're going to give you a report on the, there are two recommendations. One is from Booth and Booth and Associates, based on the study. The other one is the UPG that they did, they tested all the substations. And we're doing very good on those. Actually, we are ahead of the schedule on those.
He said, is there anything we're not doing?
No, we're not, there's nothing that...
I mean, did, so did Booth, did, yeah, there wasn't anything that Booth said, you absolutely should do this, and for some reason, it didn't?
Well, there, yes. There's some of them, some of the feeders that, you know, they recommended for replacing the cables with the seven fifty, doubling up the cables, basically, for feeders. That's not going to benefit us much. First of all, we don't have the dark knife in order to double up those. And plus, with the rating, derating the cables due to the heat index in the conduits, it's not going to buy us much. So the solution to that is, we said, we're going to go alternative. And that would be building any substation in Ballarat area in Wilmington. And start transferring the load, some of the loads from Station Four and Station Three. So those feeders, they're going to go within the normal ratings, and we don't have to double up those feeders. So the money that you're going to spend to, in order to double up the feeders, we're either to put it toward the new substations and transfer the load to that substation.
So essentially, yes, but there are a couple of alternatives. We're, we're meeting the intent of the, the recommendation, we're just doing it in a more efficient manner, in a, in a more of a holistic approach.
Yeah, maybe, Mr. Chair, maybe at a future meeting, certainly not tonight, we might want to take a summarized, which I know you did before, look at maybe both the studies or maybe one in one meeting.
Especially, I have.
Yeah, just a, because I think it's good, we spent a lot of money and we did a lot of good work, so I think it'd be a nice validation.
Actually, we have that long spreadsheet with twenty, thirty recommendations. So all of those, and we have at least which one is completed, which one is in progress, and by the year, which year it was recommended to be done. Yes, we have that spreadsheet. More than I can share that in one of the cap.
Maybe at our next meeting, we can do that.
We're committed to do a president update quarterly, which we have done so far.
Yeah, okay. There you go.
You'll see that. You're ahead of the schedule on that. This is not what we plan to do.
Okay, great.
Chair. Yeah, go ahead.
On project number ninety-eight, this is the office renovations, could you talk, talk a little bit more about what those consist of?
Office, one second, ninety-eight.
Yep.
So in the right-hand column, upgrade one carpet at two thirty Ash Street, remodel accounting area, and replace broken office conference chairs.
So that's how much, two hundred and...
No, that, that's ninety...
How do you find what page is it?
That was...
Colleen, excuse me. What page, and how do you find out what page you're...
Seventeen.
Okay. And is the, are the pages shown here? I guess I'm not, I see page seven.
Seventeen. You got it, that's seventeen.
Oh. Should I know that seventeen?
Yeah.
Yes, look at the bottom.
Project number ninety-eight.
Oh, you haven't got your thing.
You can just touch it.
Right, you should touch it and put some, put, you see?
Yeah.
Let me get back to the...
Yeah. No, I got it set. All right.
Nope.
Thank you for that tutorial.
Go down through...
My pleasure.
Right there.
Let's dinosaurs stay together.
Yeah.
So...
My question, I guess, is about specifically the remodeling of the accounting area, whether, just in light of the many discussions over that the building could get sold or could get repurposed, that I think it's good to do the chairs and so on for people's ergonomics. But whether we can, do we really have to do a remodel for the building new walls?
It's a wall, is what it is, to keep people out of accounting because it's becoming a real problem. It's, there's confidential information in there, and we're just going to wall up on the beginning. But it's, it's not that much money. We've got the LED lighting.
Yeah, the LED lighting.
The project one oh four is a hundred thousand dollars, and that is upgrade Ash Street and other RMLD facilities and put substation LED fixtures. You have, I don't know how many chairs we have in here, but we have...
How much is the, is the wall?
The wall is like, I, I forget, I...
Just the control room area?
For accounting.
About thirty thousand, I think it's about thirty. Because you have to move the sprinkler system, you've got to move the HVAC ducts.
Right. Not one wall, it's not one wall, it's not...
Sure. I guess, I guess, if for all these twenty years, we've managed to keep our books without building a new wall, I guess I question the need to build and remodel for accounting.
Well, we're moving IT. Right now, it's, it's accounting and IT in the same area.
I mean, it's a huge building, and it's an underutilized building with a lot of empty space in it. So I guess I feel like maybe we don't need to spend money on renovating the building. I mean, yes, on the keeping ergonomics and desks for, that's important for people, but actually constructing new rooms or new partitions at thirty thousand. Maybe I say this, having just sat through a four-hour town meeting where people tried to get thirty thousand to keep the library open on Sundays. I know it's different, but, you know, it's, it's the kind of thing where do we really need to do this? So can we back it out of the capital budget?
Well, I'm not sure I agree with that. And part of the reason I don't agree with it is because you have to, you do have to provide a good working conditions for people.
Yep.
And modern working conditions and the loss of one or two people because things are getting shabby and they don't like working here. You know, the amount you'd spend on recruiting costs would more than cover the cost of a wall. So...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not talking about stopping, not buying chairs and desks for people, it's just, it's just building a new room in this giant building. That's all.
Well, I, maybe you could let me know where, where it's underutilized, that I could, what I need to do is I need to take it, I need to remove IT so that it's only accounting. They have, we have to have an area where we can discuss payroll and, and all of the things that have to do with employees' benefits and things like that, that you can't just have everyone walking around the hall and, and just stopping in. It has to be semi-confidential area. I would be glad to put them someplace else in the building. Where, where do you feel is underutilized, that I could...
You know, I'm just questioning the need to invest in new partitions and new...
Also, that's part of the expansion of the control room. Because we are, as a part of our smart grid plan, we're looking to expand that room. Monitors, they're going to be holding...
I don't think he's questioning the control.
I'm not questioning the control room.
Talking about the wall and the door to keep people out of accounting.
Yeah. You need, you need to keep people out of the accounting area. Also, I want to remind you that the only way we make money is we've got to spend money. If we don't spend money in capital, we don't make the eight percent.
I see what you mean.
We have to spend money to make money. We have to spend capital money to make the eight percent. If you, if you want to devastate the eight percent, cut back on the capital.
Okay, I just, you know, we're here to, we're here to look at these things and ask questions, that's what I'm doing.
I want ten more generators.
Yeah, I mean...
We've had a significant amount of issues occur over the last one and a half to two years in three collective bargaining agreement units with trying to do all of that through accounting in an open space where everyone sits and walks. It's just been very, very difficult. And if there was another area that we could just enclose people with a door...
And my feeling is, this is a management decision. This is why we hire a general manager. This is not, this is not an area the board should decide. The general manager decides that this is what needs to be done, it's her department to run, and that we should, you know, I support what she's saying.
Keep our mouths shut.
Well, I don't think we keep our mouths shut, but...
I have been trying really, really hard to not spend any money that, you know, tripping on carpet, I have to replace it. People hurting their backs on chairs that are twenty-five years old, I have to replace it.
No argument.
I'm not even doing a full roof, I'm doing a partial Band-Aid. I mean, we've, we've tried to keep to just the absolute things that, that we need to do. And believe me, there's been a lot of requests, and ninety percent of them have been. But the accounting one, I'm going to have to say, after actually watching what comes out of that room and, and how it's impacted the collective bargaining agreement, they need to be in a closed door.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, so, I mean, this happens, I think all comments are correct. So I think it's appropriate, as commissioners, to question line items because that's what we're here for. The RMLD has some unique circumstances and situations relative to how we calculate profitability that feel already articulated. I also think, you know, Colleen has responded that she needs it. So I think, you know, from my perspective, you know, process has been served. I think Dave raised a valid question in terms of understanding it. Colleen's charge with managing the operation, she feels it's necessary. So from, at least from my perspective, I would say, good question, good answer, and that would be my perspective.
Very good. Move on? Move on, yep. You've got more to present, or?
That's it.
That's it?
That's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I, I think we always ask you this question, I mean, but is, are you comfortable, I guess it's for Colleen too, is, you know, I guess... I guess it's for Colleen, too, is, you know, I guess it's a tonight and last night question, you know, given the budget operating in CapEx, do we feel comfortable that there's enough monies being approved tonight to run the railroad, as we say, the electric utility?
Yeah, other than, you know, what I mentioned to you, I mean, typically, I'm not as comfortable with allowing the depreciation fund to go below a million, but I think, you know, I think we've been doing a good job balancing it and staying out of the bonding, in, you know, saving that for the substation purchase and doing the best we can. And, you know, it looks like we're out of the woods within another year and a half, and we're up to the level of maintain. And that's where we wanted to go. And I, I would tell you, when you hired me, I didn't think we were going to be able to do that. But with the in-house training and, you know, me doing a great job on efficiency of selecting contractors to help us, you know, we're, we're getting it done for a lot less money than I think it would have cost. So...
Good. Sounds, sounds like it.
We need help. We need more employees. And that's what, you know, Colleen and I have been trying to hire engineers, so to cut down the dependency on the consultants. So we, we are doing that. We are continuously researching for it, making quality.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
We have another member of the public and CAB here.
Okay, yeah?
Daniel?
Daniel.
Come on in. Come on in. Do you want to, do you want to come up and speak? Just come right up to the microphone, if you would, please?
Did you want to also comment, Neil? You're just here to...
Do you want to comment on anything? I mean, okay, I'm just here to observe. Okay. Very good.
No, not tonight, for a board meeting, unless you were the CAB representative, and then we got two of you.
I'm sorry.
No problem, no.
There's no problem. I'm happy to have you.
Yeah.
This guy was late for a traffic.
You're going to get a reputation with the cab of being Mr. Late.
I think I'm going to head home. My daughter just came back from college.
All right, very good.
Check on, check on your investment.
Thank you for coming, anyway.
Thanks, Neil.
All right. That was interesting. Okay. All right. If there are no more questions, then I will entertain a motion to approve the capital budget. If somebody wants to make the motion...
Yeah, I think Assistant Chair?
So the motion is the RMLD Board of Commissioners approved the fiscal year 2018 capital budget dated March thirty-first, 2017, in the amount of seven million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, as presented. And then at the end was on the recommendation of the general manager, which is added at the end.
Second?
How many difficulties do you want to call it?
David, you're not, they had to have trouble...
Yeah, I'm all set now.
Okay, all right, we're good. Okay, is that seconded?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Who made the motion? Who made the motion?
Dave was going to, but I think he did.
Right, so you can't second it.
Okay.
You can't second your own motion. Any further comments?
Is this appropriate? We did have a, a letter, I believe, from the cab relative to their review and approval of the budget. I don't know if that needs to be...
Right, yes, it would be mentioned. I want to see if there's any comments from the other commissioners.
Oh, okay. Nope.
Yes. And then the CAB, they did recommend that this be adopted.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? If none, please raise your right hand. Opposed, that motion carries, five zero. Move on to the operating budget. Do I have a motion under the operating budget?
Motion, yeah.
Okay. Is that seconded?
Mr. Chair?
Second.
So the motion is to the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the fiscal year 2018 operating budget dated March thirty-first, 2017, with a net income of four million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
Mr. Chair, before you formalize the vote, when does the comment happen?
Now.
If I may, just, just to put on the record that before the meeting, I circulated a memo just recommending that we look at bringing on somebody on staff who would have telecom expertise, one of our eighty employees, if one has telecom expertise, could help us down the road in a number of areas, internal, with our towns, in exploring how to leverage our fiber optic network, helping us with our leases, helping us with future 5G wireless, and all the things we've talked about. So I just wanted to put on the record that I'd sent that around. And, you know, I don't expect that you're going to, would change the budget at this late hour, but I think it's something we should be considering in how to bring this expertise into the department in a more systematic way.
Right. And I think a lot of that, I'm hoping that much of that will be coming out of the special committee that we had appointed last night. And, you know, every incremental piece of revenue and profitability that we can find, I think we certainly should explore and put, and give the department whatever resources which are appropriate and legal and can be covered by the, by the business opportunity. Absolutely, I would support.
Mr. Chair? This is meant not specifically just at Dave's comment, but I'm assuming in the course of operations, if Colleen, with input, support from the board, would have determined that a unbudgeted position was critical to the success of the operation during that fiscal year, there's discretion, and we're approving, we've discussed line items, but we're approving the budget in total, I would assume that there's always and every budget unfilled positions. I would assume that'd be the, because we don't have a particular position in the budget doesn't preclude it from being, if it's cost justified and approved and considered to be important to the budget. Does that sound right?
I mean, right now, we have engineering positions open in engineering job description. It talks about fiber because we own fiber. Having a job description that talks more about marketing of fiber, in that we do not have that. If things were to change and I was directed to do that, we would have to create a job description, we would have to run it through the union, we would have to create another set of books, maybe LLC, I'm not sure, and we would have to split and go into a different direction.
Yeah, I was, I was really raising, I was just sort of speaking about the process, you know, at the highest level, whether, when we vote in a budget, are we saying, you know, we're going to have X number of headcount, and we're going to add X, or at the end of the day, we're really providing a budget that supports those. But in the course, I was really thinking even more fundamentally, are you able to say, we need this position because the work has changed and we're going to swap this for that, or is that not as simplistic as I've described it?
We have to have a strategic plan that you approve.
Yeah.
And if we're going in that direction, then I would have to take certain steps to do that.
Yep.
And then there would be a vote as to whether or not you want to hire people to establish that. I mean, but right now, under what we're doing now, we will have limited telecommunications people that handle our fiber network right now and work with people like Phoenix and stuff for installations and that type of thing, but not anyone that's familiar with the marketing of it or the types of products that are offered.
Okay. Which, which kind of leads me to another segue. I would like us to maybe go back in another strategic meeting before, before we get into the summer, which means sometime in June, to have a strategic meeting to move forward on, on Dave's issue, and there are several others that I can think of, too.
Right.
That we should address in a strategic meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
Tracy, can you kind of circulate and see what, what people, what dates are available?
Phil, Chair, I'd like to say to, I really think we want to take a step forward in the fiber. I'd love to see us move, move down the road a little bit. And I think it's part of the future. We see our revenues going down, kilowatt hours going. This is one area that we can actually get growth, so I'm fully supportive of that as well.
Right. So I think we need to schedule some sort of strategic meeting in the month of June, so let's circulate some dates and let's move forward on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, very good. Further discussion on the operating budget. Again, I want to note, the CAB did approve, did recommend that we adopt this budget.
Yes.
Okay, very good. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, that motion carries. All right. Do we still have another bid that's out there?
Yes.
This was from yesterday.
Right, so you want to give us, who's, you're going to make the presentation on this, Amit, or?
Yeah. Do you want, should Dave read the motions for you, since you're the chair? Should Dave, as the vice chair, read the motions for you? Is that helpful?
Doesn't make any difference.
Okay.
As long as somebody moves it, I can read it.
Yeah, this bid is IFB 2017 dash forty for current limiting reactors at Substation Three. Basically, this is the problem that we said, we have the design flaw at Station Three, in order to lower the incident energy for switching and safe operation of the breakers inside the substation, so we needed to do add this project. I guess we had a total of nine bidders for this, and we expected that, to be honest with you, first, they gave us a quote around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for both sets, but it came out lower. Wesco was the lowest responsible responsive bidder for hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. So it came out about hundred, ton, thousand dollars less than what we expected. So, and that's one of the projects that you just voted on for FY '18. So if you, because, yes.
How many, how many responsive bids did you get?
We got two, Wesco and Graybar. And that's all, those are the two.
I just like to make sure that, because sometimes we only get one, and then I'm concerned when we only end up with one.
They advertise, they advertise all over, the central...
But if people get knocked out from, it didn't happen here, but when people get knocked out with technicalities, then that's all.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I would give a motion, but I'm not quite sure how to read it.
Yes, the motion is move the proposal 2017 dash forty for current limited reactors at Substation Three be awarded to Wesco for hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, subsection fifty-six D on the recommendation of general manager.
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? Have seen it. In all favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, that motion carries, five zero.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So do we have anything else for general discussion? Anybody have anything tonight at this point?
I don't think so. We got the meetings for June and July?
Right, the June, and then we'll see.
June fifteenth, is that what?
Yeah, June fifteenth is going to be the regular session. We'll see what the availability for the strategic meeting will be.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have anything in executive session we need to go into tonight? No?
No. But if you'd like to walk by account, then I can just show you what we're going to do.
Tracy, I am, I'll review the minutes for tonight and last night, but in the future, anybody who's to sign the payroll that month, will, whoever's, what is it, each month is a different person to sign the payroll or the accounts payable? Which?
Usually, it's the accounts payable.
All right, so whoever signs the accounts payable will be the secretary for that month. Okay?
So we're not going to talk about it?
Right.
We're going to have to talk about it?
That makes sense.
Sure.
Okay?
That sounds good.
All right, very good. Okay, do I have a more question?
That's an executive order.
That's an executive, yes, you want me to sign that?
Here's your go.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is that seconded?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, that motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.